All right, it is six o'clock, it's May 2nd. We'll call our meeting to order, start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon? Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Okay, next item is the public presentation. I believe Richard wanted to talk to the council. We do ask that you keep your comments down to three minutes.
Thank you Mayor Meserly, and I will try to keep them brief. I'm not sure if it's going to be under three minutes, but I will try to keep it brief.
Okay.
I have three questions, I have three questions to ask. First of all, how can I be a good citizen of Macokota if the city council has a habit of not listening to me? Or for the fact, five thousand other people here in this town? Either we get turned down or just brushed off, just because we have a difference of opinion. Where I work, I must listen to everybody else's concerns and suggestions. I must take these concerns into consideration, even when they go against what I believe or think. I also try to follow this principle in my everyday life. These concerns that I or any citizen of Macokota brings up should be listened to in detail. Because as far as the Macokota City Council, we, the citizens, elected you to office, meaning you work for us. And no, no disrespect, City Manager Bolt. On a different note, I have mentioned numerous times how young people, including myself, do not listen to any local media to get our news or even know notifications about snow emergencies, or even any type of news concerning things regarding to the city and events going on. We rely on Facebook, Twitter, or even via text or cell phones. Also, the older people in this community need to be properly informed as well. Thirdly, appearances are important regarding the city council. Council members, city staff, and members of city boards and commissions must abstain from votes and state why there is a potential conflict of interest due to business interest or due to sitting on a board of directors or in a leadership position of another organization, even a nonprofit one. It's easier to be upfront with the public than come up with an excuse. There also mean there needs to be a dress code for all city council officials. A code of ethics and rules needs to be put in place, not just for city employees, but for everybody, including all boards and commissions. In my opinion, words and actions mean something. All of my adult life, and I have learned, actions and words have consequences. I must also practice what I preach. In conclusion, I know it's not easy sitting up there. But being a city councilperson or a public official is very time consuming. But things need to be done in a proper time and cannot be rushed. This decision should be made by the group of you seven up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we'll move on. Next we have a presentation by Brad Coranda on the 2020 Code Enforcement Report.
Honorable Mayor and Council, how are we doing? So Josh and I put together a, a pretty good report, I think, in the packets, about our building department and what we've been doing and some of the things that we, you know, are going to be doing, hopefully, and make it better. So just kind of a quick summary of that report, I guess. As you know, I've been in the position of building inspector for four months. About two and a half to a little bit more, I've been doing, helping the water department do endpoints on the water meters. So that kept us, Scott and I both, pretty busy for my first two months, two and a half months. So realistically, I really dug into a lot of the building department kind of stuff. A little bit as I, as I had time through those two and a half, three months, and then in the last month or so. We've had just a learning curve. Obviously, some ordinances I've dealt with many years, so I knew some things with property maintenance and things like that. And there were some ordinances that I definitely had to learn. So coming into that a little bit, took a little time, and I'm still learning for, in other factors and other situations of the building department. We do many things. I guess we, we do property maintenance, we do building code enforcement on new construction, on new rentals. We do inspections on them throughout, whenever they change hands or become new rentals. We do rental inspections, try to get that within a couple of months out of the year. Once a year, we do approximately a third of those rentals. This year, it will be multifamily trailer courts. It will be the start of the third three-year inspection program that we started seven years ago. So we'll be doing that. We also deal with property maintenance, junk, garbage, you know, things that are annoying us a lot. And obviously, the springtime is the best time to start working on that. Plus, it's usually the best time everybody complains about it. So we get a lot of complaints about different things. And some things are surprising because they're hidden, and some things are pretty out there. So I guess my approach would be to hit the corridors as hard as we can and then start going inward. I've got several contacts made with, with property violations on properties. I've also kind of had a meeting with all the departments, street department, police department of Macokota, and us. And just kind of got all of us on the same page of how we're going to handle certain ordinances. Because a lot of our ordinances are geared for law enforcement to start them. You know, like vehicles, I can't run vehicles, police officers can. So we got a vehicle sitting on somebody's front yard or rear yard that we don't know is running or not. I, I don't know if they're valid, I don't know if it's what it is. So law enforcement starts those types of things. And once it gets to a point where there's an abatement process to be had, they pass it off to me. So I guess my approach is to keep it more team-related, mainly because we all talk to these people. You know, the street department, police department, I do. And if we're giving that same message out every single time we talk to them, maybe they'll get figured out. You know, hey, something needs to be cleaned up. So that's kind of my angle on that. The one, I think, big win in Macokota was 402 Circle Drive, right now. That was when the city purchased that property using a code in Iowa, I think it's 657A. Definitely got to go through a lot of hoops with that, it took about 15 months to get that purchased. And the person that bought it was a person that's in that neighborhood, and he really took it and went with it really well. If you guys ever get down on Circle Drive, take a look at it. It was an eyesore for a long time and a, and a magnet for, you know, police calls and junk calls. And at some point, the neighborhood just stopped calling us, so obviously, they just got numb to it. And then Mallory did get that started and got that done. So that's a good, that's kind of the process. Once we get it to that point, obviously, we have to make sure it's an abandoned property and go through courts to get that accomplished. I guess I just still have a lot to learn with it, too. I thought I, I thought I had a little more grasp on it than I, than I really do. I mean, there's just other avenues of the building department that I didn't know about. So I guess if you have any questions about that report or any other questions, I'm here to answer them.
Do you think there's any current ordinances that we have in the books that we could change to make, make things a little easier?
Okay, well, I get that a lot, especially from committee. You know, I think the ordinances are there, we just need, I think what needs to happen is follow-through. We can't continue to do property maintenance on stuff and stop it, stop. We get, in fact, I got a 2018 case that we had a court order to go on the property and clean it up, never got done. Now we gotta start all over, because it's a mess still. So if we don't have follow-up the city, then people don't think we have consequences, right? So I think let's, you know, there might be some tweaking to do down the road. But I think we need to get a handle on what we got with, with the ordinances we have right now. And I think that follow-through will be a big, have a big effect on it.
Okay.
I'd like to say that since Mr. Coranda took over this position, I have begun to see some very encouraging progress, especially in the first ward. And thank you for doing a good job so far. I know it's tough.
I tell you, you know, it's just gaining relationships, and I have relationships with a lot of these guys and a lot of these people involved with these properties. You know, I prefer to get, my, my attitude is, let's get them to buy in to cleaning it up themselves. Because then we're not back in six months and eight months. But we still have to monitor those at all times, because it can happen like that. We blink and it's clear full of junk again, you know? And I'm just handling the outside stuff. What else is a rental, then I'll deal with some inside stuff. I'm not going to take claim to inside stuff. But yeah, thank you.
Is that Circle Drive, that down below the high school?
Yes, right off Fifth Street there, yep, it's the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, thank you.
That's the property that Jesse Rowe bought?
Yep. Yeah, he did an awesome job in there.
Brand-new house.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the thing is, is that, that can happen, and he's willing to do another one. And what we did, what Mallory started was a vacant house registry. And I, I think that's a huge thing, just to identify vacant properties, vacant buildings. And we identify them, we inspect them, we find out what they're, what they're doing with them. Maybe they're waiting for someone to buy them. Maybe they don't, they thought they were going to fix it up and they just hadn't had time. And we got someone like Jesse that is willing to do that.
He's very eager, I know. He sent me a message a couple of weeks ago that any, any of the council members want to go take a look at the house? Go take a look at it. I know he worked from six in the morning till six at night, or he'd go to his day job. He'd be going at 10:30, because my, my sister lives down on that street. And he'd be in there till 11 o'clock at night fixing it up by himself, so.
I, I think that's a huge win, you know, for the city, to convert a property over. We bought it, we, we, we sold it at a little bit of a profit. He bought it, he sold it at a little bit of a profit. And we've got a property with an owner occupied and not a rental. That's exactly what we want to do. Yep. So if there's other properties out there, and, and that's my job, too, is just talking with the, the property owners of these vacant places that may or may not have the resources to do them at this time and say, hey, I know somebody. And get them in contact and see if it can get worked out. So that's kind of what, what that program will start doing. You'll see, you'll see some movement on those, on those properties.
That program's also put a, that house down on Niagara Street by the ball fields, they got tore down. I think Blues bought that, and they're in the process of tearing it down, so I know there's another property they've been looking for.
Yeah, that one, yeah, and they're gonna try to build or something on there, which is, which is good, too. It just, it was just so bad, it wasn't able to be fixed, I don't think, so.
Okay, anybody else?
I was gonna say, just a couple of things. I think one thing that hasn't been said yet is if, if Brad reaches the end of the road for municipal infraction, then we have to levy that $750 fine on taxes. That, that doesn't, that doesn't mean someone gets to reset the cycle. We answered that question, it's two years. You don't get to start this whole process over. So it's possible for us to reach and continue reaching once we've hit that point. That was kind of something that I didn't know until probably a week or two weeks ago, and we had an official answer. And, and just kind of a side note, you know, I came from a city of 40, 45,000 where I was working. And we may have had four residential new construction permits a year, just kind of the terrible growth that DeKalb had. And this town of 6,100 has more building permits and growth than that place. So I think that's, that is good.
Very good. Okay, thanks Brad.
You're welcome.
All right, we move on to our consent agenda, which is the minutes of our April 18th, 2022 meeting. Bills payable through May 2nd, 2022, in the amount of $79,040.10. Renewal of a Class C liquor and Sunday sales filed by Fraternal Order of Eagles, Aerie 386. Renewal of a Class E liquor license and Sunday sales filed by Hy-Vee Dollar Fresh. A renewal of a Class B liquor license filed by Centerstone Inn and Suites, and American Suites. And a proclamation making May Nurses Month. Whereas registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession. Whereas the depth and breadth of the registered nurses profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, including the frontline of the pandemic. And whereas the American Nurses Association, as the voice for registered nurses in this country, is working to chart a new course for health, a healthy nation that relies on increasing access to primary and preventative healthcare and better utilization of our nation's registered nursing resources. Whereas professional nurses as an indispensable component of safety and quality care of hospitalized and non-hospitalized patients. And whereas the demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever because of an aging American population, emerging health challenges, and the continuing expansion of life-sustaining technologies and the explosive growth of home healthcare costs. Whereas more qualified registered nurses are needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community. Whereas the cost-effective, safe, and high-quality care, healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an increasingly important component of the United States healthcare delivery system in the future. And whereas the American Nurses Association has declared May as Nurses Month with the theme "You Make a Difference." With appreciation for nurses, unparalleled impact during the pandemic and the contribution to the healthcare system, and open invitation to thank a nurse for enriching our lives in the world we live in. So therefore, it is resolved that I, Tom Meserly, Mayor, the City of Macokota, ask all the residents of Macokota and Jackson County to join me in honoring registered nurses who care for all of us and will be there in the future. Resolved that the residents of Macokota and Jackson County celebrate nurses' accomplishments, efforts, and improve our healthcare system and show appreciation for the nation's registered nurses, not just this month, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
No move.
Motion by Holm, seconded by Good. If we don't have any questions, then take the roll.
Simonsen?
It'd be Rickroll.
I'm sorry. Rickroll?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, then. We're going to our public hearings, we have none, we move into old business. Item A is ordinance number 1192. Ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 3B, Section 23 pertaining to parking on snow routes of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macokota, Iowa, and this is the third reading. Got a motion by Simonsen?
Second.
Seconded by Holm. Do we have any discussion? Take the roll.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickroll?
No.
Okay, motion did pass. Item B is ordinance number 1193. Ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter IV, Section 18 pertaining to water utility billing rates of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macokota, and this also is a third reading. Motion by Simonsen?
Second.
Seconded by Rickroll. Do we have any discussion here? Take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item C is ordinance number 1194, an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 22, Section 5 pertaining to storm water billing rates of the City Code of Ordinances for the City of Macokota, and this is a third reading. Okay, we have a motion by Colster?
Second.
Seconded by Holm. We have no discussion, then take the roll.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. All right, item D is ordinance number 1195. It's ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter III, Section 4 pertaining to sewer utility billing rates of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Macokota, Iowa, and this is a third reading.
Slow move.
Motion by Holm?
Second.
Seconded by Rickroll? If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item E is 1190, ordinance number 1196, ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 3B, Section 16 pertaining to designated snow routes of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Macokota, Iowa, and this is a second reading. Motion by Good? Don't all speak at once.
This is the new snow route? The new, yeah.
Seconded by Coleman. And do we have any discussion here?
Just to clarify, this is not a new item.
Yeah, it is the second reading.
Correct.
So go ahead and take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Now we've made it to new business. Item A is a resolution setting May 16th, 2022, as a public hearing date regarding fiscal year 2122 budget amendment. Okay, we got a motion by Colster?
Second.
Seconded by Simonsen. Any discussion here? Then take the roll.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Uh, next is B, resolution accepting a bid in the amount of $20,000 submitted by Coswell Construction for the Macokota Water Reservoir Outer Wall Repair. Can you tell us something about that, Frank?
Or Jeff?
Well, this one, if I may, on this, this is actually Jeff's lead. Uh, this is closer to his home than Frank's, believe it or not, and it protects our main reservoir, so I'll let Jeff speak to that.
Yeah, this is a repair for the outer wall going around the, the skate park. If you don't know, our skate park, it has a city reservoir underneath, 1.2 million gallons. And if you even just take a walk around it, you can see that there's a lot of spalling going on, uh, concrete, there's rebar showing. It's, it's getting in pretty bad shape. There was some vandalism where it looked like they might have taken some hammers to it at one point. And so this is to do a repair of those walls all the way around, and I believe, two foot in on top.
Okay, we had a motion by Colster?
Second.
Seconded by Coleman. Any other discussion?
Just a side note, do we think we need to put a fence right up next to the building? So it keeps objects away from that particular portion of the building?
That's not a bad idea.
If the fence comes down to the edge, like Jeff said, the concrete's exposed from the outside.
You're talking about like a chain link?
Something, yeah, maybe a foot out or...
That's an idea.
I don't know, actually, just think about it, I guess.
Yeah, we, we'd have to take a look at that, because I guess the next part is going to be for the ADA ramp that they're looking for people to get up onto the skate park. And they are going to be doing, putting a new gate in with that and making some adjustments to the fence, but it would not be covering, well, actually, anything beyond the skate park. So yeah, I mean, we can, we can look at putting something around the actual building itself. But, but this is the entire structure there, so there's already a fence on top of it. I mean, it'd be, it'd have to be looked at.
Sounds like you have permission to get a quote.
There you go.
Okay. Go ahead and take the roll.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item C is a resolution accepting a bid in the amount of $12,000 submitted by Coswell Construction for the Macokota Area Skate Park ADA Ramp.
I can kind of speak to this one. Basically, we've had the money in the parks budget for the last three years to kind of do this. And it's kind of part of the, the third phase of kind of doing the, redoing the skate park. Um, fencework, Corey, is like the next thing that's going to happen. I think the plan is to kind of cut the, that big fence around and move it down to six foot and then put new chain link up around it. So yeah, so basically, the skate park was kind of closed at the end of last year, the end of last summer because of the ramp. I mean, it's all, it's wood and it's rotten, and it's unsafe to walk up, so that's why we kind of did this. We went with the ADA just because, you know, we want people with wheelchairs to be able to go up there and, you know, if they want to ride on the ramps, they can, or just kind of go have a little fun, they can. Um, so it kind of all made sense, and the bid came in pretty well, so.
Okay. Is it required by the government to put an ADA ramp there?
I think it is, but we weren't sure, so we just will go with it, you know, just to be safe, rather be safe than sorry.
Are the, the ramps that are up there already wheelchair-safe?
The smaller ones are.
Okay, so they can actually use a wheelchair on one of those if somebody has the courage.
If they really want to, but I mean, it's just one of those things.
I was wondering about that.
So.
Okay. Well, we need a motion.
Slow move.
Okay, motion by Holm?
I'll second.
Seconded by Coleman. If we have no more discussion, take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item D is a resolution approving fees and charges for city equipment and services and water meters.
Mayor, this is one of those just small requests. This is old resolution language, $110 from once upon a time, and now we know these endpoints are 170. I don't want to call it market rate, because people get a little upset at that at a steakhouse, so we're going to call it city cost here. That's our actual cost that we're passing on to a new home that's being built or a new meter that has to go in for whatever construction and permit purposes. So we're asking for your authorization on this.
Okay, motion by Colster?
Second.
Seconded by Rickroll. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item E is a discussion and possible motion regarding a quote in the amount of $8,294 submitted by Iowa wall, wall sawing for the Plairstreet project.
Frank, you want to take this one?
This is a problem. We have to replace the curb and gutter in the sidewalks in the 100 and 200 block, well, for the whole project. But this is the business area. All the existing sidewalks are either tied to the building footings or the face brick is laying on top of the sidewalk. The sidewalk is supporting the outside face brick of the building. In order to play it safe, we, we have to saw cut right along the building and keep the existing sidewalk underneath the building and then pour the new sidewalk up to the old sidewalk. The only way to do that is to saw cut along the building.
Chick-fil-A asked for this about a week and a half ago, and we're kind of stuck here, because we want you guys to be in the driver's seat. So we told them to wait. And for all we know, this company will be out there tomorrow with your authorization here. So every time we have something like this, it'll be your votes. Clearly, they want two and a half to do it. From my experience over in DeKalb, we had Facebook 16th Data Center, that was private property, but it was easement this and variance that. But councilmen were making decisions on that every other week or month. easement this and variance that, but councilmen were making decisions on that every other week or month, so uh, expect things like this in the future regarding the Platte Street Project.
Where is the area concerned on the two hundred block?
Um, I think it's by the church, Corey.
Probably that retaining wall.
This looks like that uh, the one side of this photo looks like it used to be a bank or something and the other side looks like that uh, antique shop.
This here photo here is in front of the antique shop.
I know it's gotta be done, but it's not a surprise and that's what's irritating. You, in the wordage of surprise, that we had the same surprise on Main, so we should have had some idea. I'll make a motion to approve it, but this needs to get marked down in that list for Bolton and Mink, in my opinion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Collister?
A second.
Okay, seconded by Coleman. We have no more discussion, then take the roll.
Home?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Okay.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item F is a resolution approving Alliance's one point nine percent cost increase for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Collister?
Second.
Seconded by Home. Any discussion? And take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Home?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item G is a resolution authorizing the purchase of sewer cams from McQueen Equipment in the amount of ninety-one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars.
This is um, a replacement for the uh, sewer camera that we, we uh, we originally had bought it back in the early two thousands and uh, we basically, well, so to speak, run it into the ground. Um, there's uh, no support for it anymore. Uh, it's, it uh, too old. Um, and so this, this is a new system. Um, we're gonna try to reuse our ambulance again and uh, just mount it all in there. It's just uh, replacing the, the, this is a camera that um, we actually lower into a manhole and we can drive it down the line and uh, be able to look up lines to the side or see where there's problems. And uh, we, for the last uh, year or two, we've been flying blind, uh, because we haven't had this. But we've uh, been uh, saving in our CIP, we have the money there, and so it's uh, time to get it replaced.
Does this camera go through only the sewer line or can it be used in the, the storm?
Can also be used in the storm.
But not fresh water, though?
Oh, no, no, no.
Alright. Glad to hear that.
Maybe the first time it's ever put out.
Alright, do we have a motion on this?
Is there a reason why we're going with McQueen, the pricing wise?
Yeah, it, uh, we did demos of all of them and uh, this is a lighter unit, one person can handle it, where the, the others are uh, more of a two-person um, trying to manhandle it. Uh, that uh, maintenance on it and just, you, there's different configurations where, you know, you change wheels, you change, you know, depending on what pipe you're gonna be in and this was just so much easier to uh, you didn't need a degree to, to, to take it apart and change, change uh, configurations over. And the, the other one, uh, was it Aries, I believe was the, had a, a lower, but um, they left some things out.
Make a motion to approve the ninety-one thousand five ninety?
Okay, we got a motion by Simonson?
Second.
Seconded by Rickroll. Uh, one quick question, Jeff. Do you do um, private home sewer lines?
Uh,
For feet?
For feet, yes. Um, uh, we, we have a, we call it the push camera. And that's just exactly what it is. It's on a reel, it's got a little uh, you know, camera setup about this big. And you, it's on a, a, a stiff line, that, you know, and you literally just push it, but you can only push that in ninety feet if you're, you know, lucky. And um, it's laying to the bottom of the pipe. So trying to push something like that down a, a larger line, you're gonna be underwater the whole time, you won't see anything.
That's a good question, Mayor. I, you know, in the purchase of my home, um, I paid Roadruder some, some decent money versus Alliance. Alliance or the city won't, you know, tell you what it is. It's your job then to take it to a plumber, but yeah, we offer that service.
Okay. Alright, well, we've got a motion and a second. We have no more discussion, take the roll.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Home?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. We've made it to uh, Reports and Communications. Do we have any reports from any city council members? Okay, if not, city manager?
I have four things, sorry, then we'll get out of here. Uh, May fifth, this Thursday, starting at three, we have our University of Iowa ISICS group. That's the, the planning session group. Um, council, your attendance is requested if you can make it out. If not, we understand, but department heads have been notified of, of what that means and there's a number of other projects that are being included on that. Um, I will say that we are gonna be bid letting for the YMCA, CDPG for the air handling units. Um, it's gonna be a tight schedule before cost increases go up in June. So I wanna at least state now that I'd like to get together for a special meeting on May twenty-sixth. That's right before Memorial Day weekend. Uh, I can't wait till May thirty-first, the Tuesday, because Scott needs council authorization to make the order, which can happen then on the twenty-seventh or thirty-first, but if we wait till June first, uh, our vendors and our advice now is that it'll be thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars more expensive June one. And that's gonna come from nowhere but our CIP because we're above that five hundred thousand dollar award. So uh, just make a mental note, the May twenty-sixth, I'd like to get a quorum together here. Get a vote in, it'll take five, ten minutes most, so. Uh, May fourteenth is Spring Cleanup Day, seven thirty AM, starting at Horseshoe Pond.